I'd like to call for the October 28th, 2025 Columbia for council meeting, but I have a roll call theme.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Here.
Councilperson Stahl?
Here.
Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Geezy?
Here.
Councilperson Murphy?
Here.
Councilperson Regard?
Here.
Councilperson, Councilperson Zane?
Here.
Mayor Lutz? Thank you.
Great. Uh, would anybody care to offer an invocation? If you would like, please rise from the side. Councilperson Kaufman would like to leave some flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive sessions, there were none. Is there any additions, deletions, or reorganization of the agenda?
I would like to reorganize something. Um, the agenda item, what was it? I don't remember. Um, it would be 12A, E, and H to move them up either after 8C or after Mayor Lutz, Chief Braumer. Only so they don't have to stay and we're mindful of people's time. Cause the one is at the very, the very end.
Yeah.
Which our discussions could be long and that keeps someone here longer.
All right, all three of those are news business, so, um, does anyone have a moving those up?
Where do you want to move them to?
Yeah, which one would you like to move them to?
Um, I'd like to move them to right before 11.
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to move 12A, E, and H to before 11.
Is there a motion or second?
Um, well, no, there, that's, now, is there any other additions or whatever? All right, could I have a motion to approve the reorganized agenda?
So moved.
Right.
Motion by councilperson Geezy, second by councilperson Kaufman to approve the reorganized agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, presentation, who's doing this? Michelle, take it away.
Good evening, everyone.
This one?
Yeah.
Cause I have a big.
Um, as Chair of the Columbia Parks and Recs Recreation Advisory Board, the Columbia 300th Advisory Committee consists of merchants, historians, and community leaders. I'm delighted to announce our Columbia 300th Anniversary Logo Student Winner this evening. Columbia founded in 1726 as Wright's Ferry by John Wright thrived for 300 years on the Susquehanna Banks, a key ferry crossing, underground railroad haven, Civil War defender, burning our bridge in 1863 to stop the Confederates, and an industrial powerhouse with canals, railroads, and wagon works. We've hosted dreams of being the U.S. Capitol, survived floods, loss of our Opera House, and preserved treasures like the National Watch and Clock Museum. Our symbols are river waves, bridges, Quaker spirit embodying resilience and community unity. Our winning logo brilliantly blends this with modern flair, evolving river motifs into a dynamic beacon of connection, using bold lines and Susquehanna curves for versatility in print and digital. It's the creation of Kayden Matthews, an eighth grader at Columbia Middle School. Kayden, can you please join me up here and you can help the family as well? You're not alone. I would like to present you with a certificate of recognition from our 300th committee. And also, we would like to present you with a $100 gift, Visa gift card for your efforts. Your design stood out for its originality and alignment with our values of inclusivity and innovation. You're captured our ethos, ripples of the river, carving enduring pathways through creativity. It'll adorn banners, events, and merch as we celebrate our 2026. Congratulations, you prove our feud are designing tomorrow. From ferry boats to future frontier, we award you the $100 gift card. We would also like to thank the over 115 logos entries for the Columbia Borough students. Yours for Columbia's next 300 years. Let's go. Thank you.
So just some comment, non-agenda items only. Tony, I believe you're on for the, the hard one, right?
Correct.
Okay. First sign up is Mary Wickenhizer. Yeah, we'll have you on the plane. Mary.
Okay, good evening. First off, thanks to Jake and the guys from the fire department for the use of their boat. They got the docks out today down at the River Park. I know Jake was trying to get them out since the last week of September. Cats, when I was here in September, we had an issue with them up in our neighborhood. There's still an issue, but the nights of September 29th and 30th, the group was up there. My understanding is they took seven cats out of the houses on either side of me that they were able to trap there. I was not home overnight on October 1st. They were not back, but when I came home on October 2nd, there were eight cats on my neighbors. So there's still an issue with the cats up there. My issue with the cats is I walked by the park and there are signs, no dogs allowed. I can't put up a sign on my yard that says, no cats allowed. I'm told I have to clean up after my dog. No one cleans up after the cats that are shitting in my yard. When people are requesting to set up feeding station for cats, why aren't the neighbors contacted? Cause the cats don't just stay in their property, they're all over the neighborhood. They affect the entire neighborhood. I have lived there 50 years in that house. And then the last four years, this has got totally out of hand. People weren't allowed to feed cats. Need to go back to that. I want to know who is responsible for property damage done by cats. I had a neighbor come to me. And she was almost in tears. She had a bird bath. That was broken because cats jumped in it. That bird bath meant a lot to her. It was given to her for a 20th anniversary gift by her husband, who is now deceased. But yet, nobody can take responsibility for that because nobody takes responsibility for the cats. Okay, got that out. When I was here last, I also was discussing the parking down at River Park. Manager Braumer had approached me about that issue and I'd like, I, I'm hoping something is being done to remedy the lack of the actual ordinance for the Memorial Day. I always have to think Memorial Day to Labor Day restrictions. And another thing in talking to several people, there is one handicap space down there in that lot.
This one?
And that, that handicap space needs to be designated. There needs to be another sign under that that says vehicles with trailers only. Because there are a number of people who do have handicap signs who do use that. And other handicap vehicles parked there. Granted, the guys are gone fishing, I don't know what. The October 14th meeting that was canceled. On the agenda, there was a discussion with Rick Brenneman regarding the McGinnis property disposition. I'm not seeing that one here again. And since Derek is here, I will tell you, my daughter, nothing has been done to that back bank. They are calling for rain. There is nothing there to keep water running off of that back bank. And the only thing that has been done to her bank in the back is all the trees and vegetation were torn out. It is now dirt and gullies back there. And she's really concerned. She's ready to sand back her garage. Thank you.
Mary, the handicap space you're, you're in question there. I, I was actually down at the River Park today and I think I might even park that space. Is that long enough to get, I mean, my truck, I just, I have a pickup truck and it took up the, just about the whole space. You're gonna be able to get?
I'm talking about the one over, okay, I've run out of time. I, I'm talking about the one actually in.
Where the boats park?
Vehicles, yes, it is long enough because there is a gentleman parks in there with a trailer.
And it doesn't stick out the back?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. Okay, sorry to go over.
No, I say it seemed shorter to me than the others, so.
Next sign up is Brad Chambers.
Good evening. So, uh, as I'm sure most of you know, with 40 million Americans scheduled to lose access to food aid due to the state and federal shutdowns, things are going to be getting a lot harder around here. Of those 40 million, 55,000 of them belong to Lancaster County, and I'm sure quite a few of them live here in Columbia. I opted to organize a Thanksgiving giveaway with, uh, as in my capacity as the, the co-chair of the Black Caucus of Lancaster County Democratic Committee. I wanted to do it originally at the Market House, but I was told that I, I could not do so because it is a political event. I was willing to pay to do this, to give away food to people in the, the community. But, um, I was wondering if that's the case. I have done two, uh, previous political events at the Market House, which I paid for. There's never been a problem. I was wondering if, uh, that policy had changed at some point.
I'm the one who, uh, actually spoke to Bonnie about it. The issue Brad was, uh, rental during a, on a Saturday when the market is open. Uh, you absolutely can have an event outside of those hours.
Oh, it, it was on a Friday, on the 21st.
Maybe I was misinformed then.
Gotcha. No worries. Um, is there, so wait, there's not any issue with political events at the Market House at all?
As long as it's not in Market Hours.
Yeah, as long as it's not in Market Hours.
And they are looking to be open on Fridays, though.
Actually.
So that may be an issue too, if the market's open on Friday.
Okay. We are doing.
Cause they're doing trial runs to be open on Friday, so that may be the issue too, cause the market would be open.
Okay, uh, is the, um, do we have, is, is there like a written copy of the use policies for the Market House that can be, uh, like viewed or, or read by the public?
I, I don't believe we've, no. I mean, we didn't set any specific.
Okay, uh, so it's just on a case by case basis?
I mean, yeah, obviously, when it's not Market Hours.
Okay.
Who told you you couldn't have it because of political event? Who, who told you that?
Um.
Bonnie.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta know, right?
Yeah, uh, Bonnie is right there. I didn't want to.
And Bonnie confirmed with the chief. Yeah.
That it was a political.
Well, you, you could say that it was because I'm, I guess by nature I'm political, but, um, you could, you could say that it is because I would, like, the, the money would be spent, uh, like, I had a thousand dollars to, to spend on turkeys to give away to people, uh, but it is coming from a political PAC.
I think his concern is, was I, was I being denied because of, of being a political event? Is what your real concern was, all the other stuff?
It was denied because it was during Market Hours.
If you were, if you were told otherwise, it was a mistake.
Okay. Oh, thank you for that and.
No nefarious or deliberate discrimination or anything like that.
Okay.
It was a mistake.
Thank you.
Next sign up is Sharon Mutter.
Good evening. I just had a question about trick or treat this week. If we could, um, consider a crossing guard at Fifth and Chestnut during the hours of six to eight or whenever it is, because last year I did call in because there were so many kids crossing randomly and that is already a very dangerous intersection. And I was holding my breath quite a few times, even yelled to some to be careful because they were in dark clothing and just running heller scouter. I just think that's one of the worst places for them. And, you know, I'm not sure I'll be able to participate this year, so I'm not going to be able to watch them. But anyway, thank you if you can.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah.
Next sign up is Frank Daltrick.
Good evening, you all. About, I guess, two weeks ago, I have a, a building up at 19 Aronville Pike right on the corner. I was coming out of the garage and two young kids, I'd say between 11 and 12 years old, on one scooter, electric scooter, come by the street nearby by me. Had they hit me, I wouldn't be standing here today. It happened so fast, I think they went out the Aronville Pike. I don't know where they went. But don't they have to find, follow the traffic laws? Are they allowed on the payments?
Technically, um, electric scooters are not allowed to be on the road at all. They have thoroughly allowed on private property.
That's right. We've had this discussion.
Not on the payment or the street?
We've had this discussion.
So they're not allowed, so they're not allowed in Columbia then?
On private property, they can be.
Well, this is public street, they went by. I just happened to come out, it just from by me so fast. If they'd have hit me, I'd have been done.
Yep.
But, but anyway, uh, along with that, when was the last time you ever seen a patrolman, stop the police car, get out, take the bike or the scooter, and call their parents, make them come to the office, come to the police station, find them or whatever? When's the last time you ever seen that?
I believe in the summer when the mayor had this discussion, there were a few stops. Yeah, there have been.
Yes.
I can't tell you how many, I just remember the mayor saying, we're actively stopping kids.
I'm 87 years old and I've never seen it since I've been here all my life. That would be appropriate if that would happen because it's going to do not but get worse. My other, uh, my other deals, uh, I'd like to ask Derek if I could, what for ties we have that your company has with, with the Lancaster Water Company? What for ties do they have?
Lancaster Water Company recently asked CS Davidson to assist them with an HOP, a Highway Occupancy Permit, for a water line replacement project on Kinderburg.
Okay, so they do do business with Lancaster City? You do do, you do do business with, with Lancaster City?
Oh, wait, Lancaster City?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant Columbia Water.
No.
Um, I don't, we don't have any affiliation with the water project. Our company does do business with Lancaster City. We provide, um, we provide land review, um, services. We do inspection work for some of their street cuts and other, anything else they ask us to do, but that's the basis of our work.
Okay.
I nor has anybody with the company getting involved with the water line project.
Okay, and while I have you, uh, the, the 8th Street property, what was the borough's, what, what was their compensation towards that? I think that the, the amount was, uh, was it 400,000 to do that 8th Street property? Eight, between 8th and 9th on Chestnut?
On Chestnut, uh, what was, you're asking what the total project cost was?
Yes.
Uh, no, it was closer to three.
I thought it was four.
My estimate was four, but we received a really good bid. It was actually in the packet here.
Yeah.
It's in the low two hundreds of it.
In the upper two hundreds.
What, that's okay, you, you can get it later on, could have just taken my time. What was, what was Columbia's payout of that? How much did Columbia pay towards that?
All of it.
There was no grant associated with that.
You're kidding me? Wow. My concern is, is the bump out. I didn't realize when you said, here, we'll work with a property owner, I didn't realize it was going to be all that. There took that two corner property, you took one on 8th Street and one on Chestnut. I, I don't understand that. And along with that, who owns the trees? The trees that we put the bump out for?
The property owner of the trees.
All right. Who owns the trees?
Property owners.
They're not in the right of way and it's not the borough's concern?
Just because it is in the right of way, it's not the borough. Generally, those property lines go through the center of the borough, I think right of way over that, that area generally, depending on exactly where the trees are, to do what they need to do, but it's not in ownership or responsibility of the borough.
Does anybody have any other resemblance that this was done for any other property owner?
I, I don't think it was for the property owner specific, it was to preserve the street trees.
Well, I, it goes way further than that actually, the, the bigger, the bigger issue.
And the storm, it was the stormwater issues.
It was the stormwater and the ADA issue. So, I mean, the benefit of what we designed with that bump out, which was kind of a win-win, is we were able to save those street trees. If the curb would have continued down that street, we would have had to remove those trees, including roots, which would have been very costly. Now, it's debatable whose cost that would have been, but the bigger issue is we had to fit an ADA compliant ramp at that corner. If you recall how that corner used to be set up, there was a brick gutter that went down that street and turned around that corner to convey the water from 8th, excuse me, to convey the water from Chestnut to 8th. So there was no storm sewer on that corner previously. Now with the ADA regs, you need to have basically a flat ramp and a flat street. You've seen that with all the other projects we've done. There was no physical way to convey that water around that corner without installing some sort of storm sewer infrastructure to do that. The bump out not only gave us room to put that compliant ramp in, it gave us a spot to capture the water on that low spot and get it into that new inlet we put. So if you look, we now have a storm sewer system that runs around there. I, I can tell you, and councilperson Stahl can back me up, we were out there in a driving rainstorm mapping how that water went around that corner so that we could make sure to get the flows right. And, you know, really, that was a design that we came up with, that we thought would best suit the ADA compliance, the stormwater management, and then ultimately the add benefit is we saved the trees. And nobody had to spend a significant amount of money to take those trees down.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I am the last speaker. Could I ask for a couple more minutes?
Um, no, we have a very full agenda.
Oh, I always get that. You always have a big agenda, so. I, I just, there's just one thing I'd like to stress on the, just relating to the budget. Uh, it looks like we're $900,000 in the writ. And apparently that's going to come out of reserve because, uh, they're not going to raise taxes.
We're still working on it, Frank. We're still.
Yeah, I understand, but you're not going to get 900,000 out of that. But, uh, being a selection here, I can understand why you're doing it.
You're right. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak but did not get a chance to sign up? No? All right. Uh, minutes for approval. We have a motion to approve the Borough Council Meeting Minutes for August 7th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy, approve the Borough Council Workshop Minutes for August 7th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, we have a motion to approve the Borough Council Meeting Minutes for September 23rd, 2025.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the Borough Council Meeting Minutes for September 23rd, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have a motion to approve the Borough Council Workshop Minutes for October 7th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy, to approve the Borough Council Workshop Minutes for October 7th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, presentation and acceptance of reports. Um, I'd like to acknowledge receipt of the finance reports for September 2025. These include, um, all the summary of all funds, the ACH report, the aging, the AR aging report, and, um, the quarterly lean report. Are there any questions? I have a question, actually I have a couple of questions on the AR report. There, it should, one of the entries on there shows a condemnation review for the property in 600 block of Walnut Street. And it's my understanding from an email we received from a resident in that block that the condemnation was lifted because there's people living in that property again. How? How are they able to occupy that property if they still haven't paid for the condemnation review? I thought we had said before, like, we're not, we're not issuing things code-related if they don't pay for it ahead of time.
Paul, do you have any information on that?
If you can give me details and I can do the research, I will get back to you on that.
Well, I will get you the address, but, yeah, I mean, it's in the report. Um, and then, the next question I have, um, you know, when I'm looking through it, there's, there's a fair number in here of past and present Market House vendors. We know, well, I, I don't want to say we know, we have been told that previously there were side deals being made saying, if you do X, you can reduce your rent. However, I also know that, um, that was not sanctioned by Borough Management. So at what point, like, how do we determine these ones on here on the AR report, if they're truly owed or not? Is there anything we can do to collect on those? I mean, I know there's a couple that had been an issue, but then there's others where we've been told, oh, we didn't have, we were told we didn't have to pay. And, um, so, I mean, what can we do? Like, at what point do we say, we write this off, it's uncollectible?
So management had a meeting this morning. We discussed this issue at length. Uh, we think first and foremost, it's important to develop a policy where we are consistent with all of the vendors. Uh, we do have one that is in the rears, uh, a number of months. Uh, we've already taken action, the Market House manager has taken action to make it very clear to that individual that they must be current, must, must be paid up by November 1st, where their access will be suspended. So we've begun to work on this.
So we've begun to work on this. Um, but we, uh, meaning the market house manager, myself, and some of the other managers are going to develop this policy. We will, uh, of course, bring it to Council at some point for review and your approval. And then we will, uh, have a meeting with all the vendors.
And likewise, um, I thought last year when we were talking about the, the fee schedule and so forth, we had said we weren't going to issue rental license or clear the rental inspection until those are paid. And yet there's a significant number in, of new tenant walkthroughs in the AR report for, well, I'm looking at one now for, you know, over 180 days. Like, and there are others that, you know, are even less than that. So I know that they're still happening. At what point are we going to stop issuing things? Stop issuing the rental registration? Stop issuing, clearing the new tenant to walk before we get paid? Because once, once we've given them that, we've lost our leverage to collect that money. I mean, this AR report, we have over $50,000 that people owe us. I mean, we've got to get this under control.
This is a priority for the Management Team. We may take a close look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, before this, I was working with the finance manager to look at, to, to match out ADP with, um, the principal for the 457 contributions. And we had talked about, maybe it's as simple as you guys determine what we're quote-unquote writing off, the things that have been out there forever that we know are uncollectible, or, you know, some of these market stands that we were told, hey, we had a side deal or whatever. Uh, and then it, it comes to Council and we approve the list of this is what we're writing off and get it cleared.
And, and there's nothing, we don't have anything written down. We don't, we don't have a written policy anywhere regarding this. Cause I know, you know, going back, you know, years when I was on Council, before and as a Council President, we had dealt with this before. And I know we put policies in place. It just seems like every time we change Borough Ma, uh, Market Manager, something gets lost in the shovel and, you know, it seems like it keeps happening again and again. So.
Do you have any of the existing policies?
I'd have to go back and look.
The policy's the contract. They sign a contract. Contract states now, you have to pay. How many days are, how many days grace are given, the fines and everything else? That's the policy. It's not a word of mouth policy. It's not Jack's policy. It's not Council's policy. It's the contract that we agreed on. Is it being enforced?
Enforced.
That's Jack's problem.
How?
That is very important, right? Once in that contract, absolutely important. But it's a matter of, if somebody doesn't pay that 30 days later or 60 days later, what do you do to try to collect that? Just trying to tell you, once you get past that 60 day mark, your chances of collection go down very, very quickly. So we want to try to escalate things and finding the right, the right way to do that is important, um, when you, when you're looking at this. So absolutely, that contract is the governing document, but we've got to figure out what to do if we get past that point.
How often are people contacted that they're on this list? Like, some of these people are older. Have they been contacted recently saying, hey, you're still on this list? Or how, what's the policy?
It's going to be part of the policy that we're carrying.
Okay.
Absolutely. I mean, my goal is to go through, clean up the old items, get to the point where we have current items. And then since we're reviewing this on a monthly basis for Council, is to, if anybody then gets into a greater than 30 days, one of the ideas was to then reach out and pull a reminder. It's when it gets to 60 days or what are, what are some other options?
Okay.
And the other, finally, the last question I have on this AR is the cause billing. There is one property that I thought if the cause payment was not paid, we can revoke the status of cause. And here we are, it's like five years, I think, that it hasn't been paid. I mean, we don't, the, the tax code stipulates what happens if, if the property taxes aren't paid. But cause is separate because it's its own, it's its own program. But I thought that program said if they were not paid within that year, the cause was revoked and it went back to the normal property taxes. Uh, and yet this one has been out there and it hasn't been paid for five years. And we need to, we need to figure that out as well.
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
Um, I would like to correct your statement that any COOs or licenses are issued if fees are owed. That is 100% incorrect.
So are these people on here then that we see reinspection walkthroughs already gotten the rental license and the inspection? Or they have not because they owe you the money?
Again, I would have to look at each one individually.
Okay.
And have both my ladies in the office. Nothing gets issued. I'm sitting here signing the licenses and the COOs now that meet all the requirements. One of the requirements are all fees are paid. So the statement that these are going out when fees are owed is incorrect.
That's why, I mean, I'm looking at a QP Invest Real Estate Group that had rental inspection and rental reinspection in April and August. So am I to assume then that they would not be issued a license or?
That is correct.
How does that work?
Do the managers receive any AR report?
That was part of our discussion today. And we need to, we need to do a better job.
If we're going to hold down responsibility, at least now.
That's right.
What's on there?
Yes, I, I did run a report, uh, a current AR report through this morning and actually shared that with, with Bonnie.
Okay, wonderful.
Because some of, some of the payments actually came through.
Right.
Or partial payments came through. More to give her more tools to be able to understand where, where some of these balances stand. I understand, again, we all understand too, some of it's timing too. I mean, this report could be printed on the 15th and on the 17th they paid it and we'll show next. The report that we were reviewing then was created in September.
Right.
And we're almost a month behind.
Right. But when you, when you have a market stand that's not made a payment since July.
That's a problem.
Or June, that's a problem.
I just want to tell you that I do have a piece of check, you see, in my office. We're kind of going to talk in the background and just share back. I have, in the last three months, started making copies of everything. And I've come to the conclusion mistakes have been made. People are making assumptions that people didn't pay and they did. There, I, I don't, I don't know what else to say, but what I, what I want, what I want people to hear in this room is some of what you're talking about is three years old.
Yeah, I hear it.
Well, right, yeah.
It isn't something that just.
I hear it.
Right, I, I know that Bonnie, that's what I said. Like, at what point do we say we're not want to?
Yeah, I hear it.
Yeah, go ahead. I don't mean to go ahead.
Thank you.
What I was saying is that some of our bookkeeping, bookkeeping is incorrect. I'm not saying all of it, but what I want people to understand, a lot of what we're talking about here goes back three years. I have no control over that. I don't even know who these people are. So.
No, that's why I said, some of these I know we had.
Right. I know, we all know that, but that we have a whole group of people sitting here that don't realize that, think people aren't paying their rent. And 90% of them are on top of it.
Right, I mean, that's why I said, you know, there were side things, side arrangements made in the past and.
I, I'm not sure about that. Maybe they were. Um, I can tell you not.
Maybe they were, maybe they weren't, or that's what we're being told.
Okay. Well, there are none now, so I, I just want to make that clear and that we, we did have a discussion today. Because many times people make payments through the borough and then I don't even know that they pay. But anything that comes through me, I do make copies of checks. So I do have a few things to take care of there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other AR questions?
I do have a question for Brian, one more thing. Why is it, why are we looking at September's AR? Is that something you could just print out? Are you done?
Yes. But for this meeting, we're, we're reviewing the prior month's activity.
Right.
Uh, but coming into this meeting, I'd like to make sure that if there were questions, that I had the latest information to respond with the managers. Uh, so I, I ran it this morning after you did it with Bonnie for some of the.
So you can, you can give her an up-to-date report right away.
And we, we actually talked, so she has the current report. And we had talked about maybe doing this on a weekly basis. So that she has the latest and greatest of what payments can come through, uh, either being on a Friday or a Monday, whichever suits. But that's part of, that's part of the process of trying to understand and create what we're going to do going forward.
Wonderful.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Anything else in the finance reports? All right, uh, safety marketing.
Just thank you. I'd like to acknowledge receipt of the public safety reports for Columbia Borough Police Department for September 2025, Columbia EMOC report for August and September 2025, EMS report for September 2025. I spoke to Chief Kaiser at the Fire Department. His report is forthcoming for September 2025. Also acknowledged receipt of the codes compliance report and condemnation report for September 2025. I would add that, uh, last week, uh, EOC James Barniger led a meeting with all the emergency service folks in this room. It was a really great meeting, quarterly meeting. Uh, there are lots of training sessions lined up, being talked about, discussed, uh, tabletop type drills and, um, it's a good meeting, so.
All right, thank you. Community development. Councilperson Kaufman.
I'd like to acknowledge receipt of the Public Market House report for September 2025. Acknowledge receipt of the zoning and planning reports for September 2025. Questions?
Uh, Public Works and Property, Councilperson Stahl.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the Public Works and Property Report for September 2025. If there's any questions?
Just remind everyone, the street sweep or the leaf collection has started, right?
It has started, yep.
Leaf collection has started.
Started the 13th.
No more yard waste.
Uh, no, yard waste is.
You can do that too.
Two more weeks, right?
Yep, until November 10th.
November 10th, yes.
Yep. Peter, at the last meeting, I do have bad hearing. Did I hear you say that you're going to raise the building on Ridge Avenue? Okay.
No.
I just wanted to clear it up. My fault. Thank you.
Any other questions on Public Works? All right, Mayor's not here, but put him on the chief hat.
Last Thursday, we had the Mardi Gras parade here in the community, another excellent event. I just wanted to, uh, recognize the Lions Club, uh, the many safety volunteers who covered the intersections, uh, the Columbia Borough, or Columbia Fire Police, and the numerous fire police entities that helped out and volunteered their time. Uh, Columbia Borough EMA, Jay, Brittany and Joe, uh, Columbia Public Works employees and Columbia Borough Police Officers as well. It was a total team effort and it would not have been the safe and successful event that it was without, uh, contributions from all of them. So, thank you.
Okay, now, before we hit the action items, we're doing number 12A, which is consider allowing placement of a piano at Columbia Crossings.
I'd like to present TJ, who will, um, speak on this piano, um, at the Columbia Crossings. It was brought to the Parks and Recs meeting on September 11th. Um, we voted, we had a motion to approve, or advise, that we have a piano in, at the crossings, the River Park. So I'll give it up to Megan and TJ to explain to you how that works and for your consideration. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is TJ Coroza and I am a founder of Susquehanna River Creative Conspiracy, which is on Lancaster Rav. And we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit music and art and photography studio and venue. Um, we do a lot of events for the public and, um, offer really low-cost memberships for people in those creative fields to have a space to create and, and just connect and, and support community in that regard, so. Um, recently, we have partnered, not really partnered, but we've been working with Music For Everyone, which is a nonprofit in Lancaster City that does, uh, a lot of fundraising for school programs, educational, um, sides of that, and also raising money for instruments for students, um, in the school system all throughout Lancaster County. They also do a public piano program. There's like 20 of them, I believe, all throughout the actual city of Lancaster. And they have approached us to work with us. They want to expand those, those pianos in other towns, um, neighboring towns. And I think as, as it is now, we're the first town they're looking at partnering with, so. Um, they have pianos donated every year, which will get painted by an artist and it's a paid gig for the artist as well. And it'll be somebody here in town as well. Um, and, um, we did one already at Coffee and Cream, which is the coffee shop right across from the Columbia Crossing Center. Uh, it's turned out really well. We've had events there already. We've had some, uh, local coverage as well. Merchandiser is going to publish, uh, an article about that as well, so. Um, I'm looking for other locations to do throughout town. The visitor center is the first spot that I had in mind because of the space and, and just the nature of it being a family center. Um, and we just need to get approval for that. And once we have approval, I'll be working with Michelle and, uh, we'll, we'll utilize that space to have a piano open to the public that's decorated and just, um, that's about it really, so. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Um, so TJ, with the Susquehanna Creative Conspiracy reached out to me a few weeks ago about this. I directed him to Parks and Rec, but along the process, I had him go over some of the questions and concerns that we would have and that SNHA thought the borough might have. Regarding ownership, um, the Susquehanna River Creative Conspiracy would, um, maintain ownership. They would also be responsible for the care maintenance. Um, the piano would be there for everybody to use freely. Um, we, I did think that maybe they could consult with Jake and Wilson about installation. I did have a few requirements with the conspiracy, um, on exactly where the piano would be placed. If it had wheels, I would be open to it being placed on the River View Deck. Then I could wheel it out of the way. But it still needs to be anchored, so it can't be moved when it's not supposed to be. So I think that covers about all of it for all intents and purposes here. I would support this project down in the River Park. So I think that covers about all of it for all intents and purposes here. I would support this project down in the River Park.
Any questions? Concerns, anyone have comments on it? No?
No, we have others around town. I think they work out really well.
Oh, yeah, I know. I, I think they're great.
Can we get one on Luther Street?
We have one.
Oh, do we?
Do I have a motion to allow placement of piano at Columbia Crossings?
Seven.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson DZ, to allow placement of piano at Columbia Crossings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? All right, there we go.
Thank you.
Next, we're doing twelve E, which is the certificate of appropriateness for two sixteen Cherry Street.
Good evenings to all the councilor. My first name Tony, last name Ha. I'm the member of the Buddha's Association right here on the two sixteen Cherry Street. And the previous, as I, um, we have it as the, um, the level rails and then handrails. It had been rotted and it's so bad and then, and we replaced and wanted it before. And they got bad again, crack, and then they won't hold it long as support to be like the previous in the wood in back then. And right now, um, unfortunately, so we couldn't undo the wood anymore because the way how they last in this day in the wood, they, they very young age. And then we tried to replace them to the vinyl and then the vinyl, I know that's going to be some, uh, last longer and better than the wood, but, um, the way it is in the Columbia and Borough to approve it for us and then the wood and then, uh, we, has been requested that, uh, replay from the wood to the, uh, the vinyl and also they are styled very similar, they're very same, doesn't make a difference, they're different on the material. And then, uh, last meeting in, um, September, the, uh, the board member, they couldn't approve it, so they passed on the councilor, so I'm here today. I would like to hear that from the councilor to get to, um, get approved it so we can put the, uh, the rail back. And also we replace a lot of wood in there anyways, so try to keep them clean up. And, uh, not going to be, you know, keep it asses and looking, not look good at all. And also I have the, um, the wood SMS in here. Unfortunately, we couldn't pay for this, so I want to show it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
So the last I told with the, um, for the board, a row of some, close to seven thousand, but right now, actually, some, I got back and then a couple of days ago, they says that had to be primed, had to be painted. That unfortunately, we couldn't afford it. And also the, um, the Buddha Temple right now, we lost a lot of members. There's a lot of move, a lot of couldn't afford it. And so now we lost, we downsized so bad, um, so that way right now financial is first and very hard. We can't afford that kind, you know, replace that kind of wood, so.
Questions, comments?
Is there any reason why they, the installer and person who do the work recommend using mahogany? For the wood, I mean, it's a very expensive wood.
Yeah.
Yeah, because last time when the board, they say, um, better to use the, the right wood because they expose for outside and also previous, we have the, the wood, we used a regular wood in there. And ballast, no, they won't last. So about a couple of months and they be down, it can crack and then bend it or bend it away, so it look ugly, so we don't want to put it back again. That worries. You know, we tried to get the vinyl, but it is, it's a different material, but only, um, but the, the style looking, they are the same. Doesn't make a difference. But nice, clean, you know, is, is a wonderful while, just, you know, power wash and clean it and that's it. That the easy to do so and also like again, so we always want to keep the community in nice cleaning because we are ready on the main road, so we don't want trash around it anyway.
I believe our ordinance stipulates that exceptions can be made for financial hardship, doesn't it? And if it does, like, what do, like, how do we can do that?
Excuse me, yes, alas, uh, when we had a meeting, so the board already revealed us yet, they say they have, but that's, it's an option to the hardship on the financial hardship, but I don't know, how can you get the answer?
Yeah, I, I don't know how we do that.
Looks like I'm looking at it here now, so.
Oh, thank you.
It looks like there's a number of, um, of pieces of information that need to be presented to Harb in order to essentially prove that hardship. So I think, I'm sure, I, I don't know if Harb has informed for that probably not, but there's a, it's a list of about thirteen things that they have to present to, to show, um, show the Harb that they, they do need that hardship. But after that, you're right, they could make a decision.
And then, so Harb would could recommend approval based on the financial hardship or council has to make that?
Council has to.
I mean, council has to, to issue the approval or denial, but does Harb have to recommend approval based on financial hardship to come to us or can we just?
They would.
They would.
Yeah.
And just so everyone, that's section one thirty dash point.
I think there's a ratio to consider here as well, if you're going to go the financial hardship route. This estimate is based on premium materials. Mahogany, I believe, is overkill for painted porch railings.
Yes.
So, you know, if you were to say, hey, I need solid gold porch rails, I guess I could qualify for financial hardship as well. But if you're using in-kind materials, wood, painted and trimmed in the same style as the original architecture, I would want to see an estimate prepared, um, in, using those specifications. I think that that would be fair in order to make a, a comparison of whether or not financial hardship really is an issue. I'm not doubting there isn't, but I think this is bad information.
Yeah, I could understand, I could understand this cost, you know, based upon mahogany, mahogany is like, oh, top end, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not something I would pay to sustain it, you know?
But, um, actually, I, someone, a friend of mine replaced a porch recently in their, their boards, they went with mahogany because it, it was cheaper than pine right now.
Is it really?
Really?
For the, for the porch boards, that's not speaking about ballisters.
Pre-cut trim, pre-cut tongue and groove.
Tongue and groove, yeah. So I don't know if there's an influx, but it, I mean, it may or may not be. And then if you consider the longevity of it, like he was saying, pine.
Yeah.
Rots in a few, or it could rot very quickly and then you have to do the work over again. So that's a problem. I mean, the review letter says wood for wood is the recommended. Replacement.
Yeah, Harb sided the, uh, incorrect, inferior standards. And it says wood for wood.
Yeah.
Just one note, I will, the, the economic, non-reasonable economic hardship is, seems to be at least only in cases of demolition. That's what, there is, there's a reference to another segment, I'm just getting to that, but that's, it's in, under the demolition. So I'm not sure that is why.
Can I add the question? Some of those are historical houses, so they installed at the level rail and the handrail, they used the metal. So why they don't use the same kind of wood the original is? So now they replaced that from, you know, from wood to the metal. I see it's a lot around as a historical house, they on the road right here on that road, they Cherry Street. So they all have the metal anyway, so they mix and match.
Yeah, I mean, some places had wrought iron railings originally, I would assume, but some of that is just people doing their own thing now, getting the approvals.
Right, and it could have been done before the historic district, yeah.
Yeah, it could be, so that was, I just drove by, I saw it's a lot of them. It says that how are they going to get the prove it from that to replace the rails and?
Questions, comments? Do you want to act on this this evening?
I couldn't say yes to an exception.
I couldn't, right. I'd need some more research. I'd like to do some more research myself, like, before I can say yes or no.
So we're not going to vote on this this evening? I mean, it's new business, so technically.
I mean, I, personally, I'd be fine voting on it. I don't think that there's, uh, room for us to make an exception at this point with what was presented.
That, I would agree, voting on it if it was.
I understand, I, I understand the situation I feel bad for, but we also have to maintain our Harb, our historical district.
Yep.
And follow the regulations, the guidance there.
And that, that takes some time to get the answer to us or how long it take? Do you know?
If we were to vote tonight, based on what we're given, it would probably no for me.
It would be no to an exception, but it would be yes to replace with.
Wood.
In-kind materials in the same style.
In-kind.
Right. It, it's, it would be a denial of the COA that says replacing with vinyl.
Yeah. Right.
So we have to, uh, we have to replay with the wood to the wood, right? So the vinyl, they denied.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I would recommend getting some, maybe a couple of extra quotes from.
Yeah, I did. I got a couple. Armored sky, but they are looking up, they say very similar the price anyway, so they didn't give out. So only this guy did, just turn around quickly so they can give me that, but some of the other armors, you know, they don't give computers.
Yeah.
They all to the handwritten now, so they say they are working the site, so they can't get back to me, so that worries last minutes.
Would anybody like to make a motion to deny the COA for two sixteen Cherry Street unless applicant agrees to replace with in-kind material, which is wood?
Okay, hold on a second. Evan, should we put that wording in there?
Do what?
We should either accept or reject this based on the current application.
Correct. Yeah, I think, I think the, the correct wording is probably to deny the application based upon, to deny the use of vinyl instead of wood railings.
So we would say the motion is to deny the certificate of appropriateness.
Substituting.
Wouldn't.
Substituting vinyl for wood.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be approved, the certificate of appropriateness, to replace wood railing with in-kind?
No, because that's, uh, that's an administrative approval.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think you could, essentially, you're just denying the certificate of appropriateness.
Appropriateness using vinyl rather than wood.
So that would be a no, though.
Yeah, it's just.
If you're against it, you'd say, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so deny the certificate of appropriateness for wood or for vinyl railings.
I think you can just say deny the certificate of appropriateness.
All right.
But wouldn't that require him to re, to go through that again, the Harb?
But he could submit a new application stating we're going to replace this with wood and that will be.
Administrative.
Oh, got it. Understood.
Yeah, they could already had an administrative approval for that, um, last year.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to deny the,
Certificate of appropriateness.
Certificate of appropriateness for two sixteen Cherry Street.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stoll to deny the certificate of appropriateness for two sixteen Cherry Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, next we are doing twelve H. We are considering the certificate of appropriateness and demolition permit for twenty North Second Street. Questions? So.
I, I would state, um, if anybody had a chance to watch the Harb meeting, if they did, I would say, uh, the property itself is condemned.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uninhabitable. So.
The only thing I don't understand is that, the, the play area, that stipulation, the required play area? Is that playground or?
No, it's just a pocket.
Oh, pocket park. What's a, what's a pocket park?
It's just green space.
Just a green space. Okay.
A tree with some landscaping.
Okay, good.
Not an open.
Okay.
Yeah, no, not like a play place.
I didn't know. I never heard of a pocket park before.
In an urban setting, they, uh, they, like, up there on, at Fourth and Locust could be considered a pocket park. Just a small.
Got it.
Green space.
Learn something new every day, huh?
Yep.
All right.
There you go.
This is Mary's cup. Sorry, I didn't bring.
This was presented to us in planning.
It's an AI-generated pocket park.
That is really pretty.
Thank you, Mary.
It took me five minutes to draw it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was nice, right? It's longer to take the picture.
Chat G P T for the win.
Anybody else?
It's a pocket park.
Yeah.
It's not an open.
Oh, so it's a little, okay.
It's, it's not open to the public, is it? It's like a green space anybody can use?
Not really, it's private property.
Okay, it's beautification.
What it is, is a place for, 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 they have their pets.
Ah, see, there's utility for everything in that.
That property will be.
Plus it improves the visibility coming out of Avenue H. Our hotel sits back three or four feet further than what the old building. So you have. And plus it's in about a foot off the alley, so you, you have, when you're coming out of Avenue H there, you have more visibility now or when it's completed to the right. And the house sits literally right on the corner. Without having the house there, you'll have even better visibility to the left. So it's a traffic benefit to it as well.
Nice.
Questions?
Shame for that house. Wow.
It is.
When was there a fire there?
Last November, last November.
It's a shame to use the, uh, tax base of a structure.
Is the part the permanent plan for this?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
Unless we do have what we call the old AMVets, the building next to it. When we did our subdivision plans for the property, we moved the courtyard, which is between the house and the AMVets. That was originally with the house, we moved it to the AMVets. So if there's a commercial uh use presented for that, they would have some room to, you know, add restrooms and stair tower, fire, egress, things of of that nature, but um there's nothing to say that somebody may come with a plan that would incorporate some of that lot. But until that day, that's the current plan that we have for it.
Any other questions? Do you have problem voting? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And what is your motion?
To approve the certificate of appropriateness for.
And demolition.
And the demolition.
And demolition.
Yeah, a dam demolition for um.
Twenty North Second Street.
I'll second that.
Motion by councilperson for guard, second by councilperson Geezy to approve the certificate of appropriateness and demolition permit for twenty North Second Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, now we are back to.
Do you have a paper for me to sign?
Oh, wait, do I? Sorry, I forgot about that.
I have an eager excavator operator down there.
That's two sixteen Cherry. Ten twenty, is it twenty eight? There we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Back up to eleven A. Could have a motion to authorize the bill payments.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to authorize the bill payments. Any questions? No, no questions. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, next, uh, do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four to support the LSA grant application for the Columbia Borough Fire Department?
Second.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman and second by councilperson Geezy. Um, we had talked about this um at the last meeting. This basically is saying that um we're supporting their application and we will act as the grantor um, just like we do with the uh, the watching clock museum. Grantee, yeah, oh, sorry, grantee, not grantor. Any other questions on that? I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four to support the LSA grant application for the Columbia Borough Fire Department, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, next, do I have a motion to approve the final application of payment for the nine hundred, ten hundred block of Walnut Street, CBBG project for twenty thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars to Doug Lamb Construction, Inc.?
So moved, second.
A motion by councilperson Stahl and a second by councilperson Kaufman to approve the final application for payment for the nine and ten hundred block of Walnut Street. Are any questions? Concerns, seeing none. As a motion by councilperson Stahl and second by councilperson Kaufman, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve contract change order number one in the amount of zero dollars and applications for payment numbers three and four in the amount of two hundred seventy thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents and two hundred fifty-nine thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-six cents to Iron Eagle Excavating for the McGinnis Innovation Park Project?
So moved, second.
Motion by councilperson Murphy and a second by councilperson Stahl to approve the change order and the payments, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question on this. No, I don't. I was trying to figure out, cause it's going through the buyer's.
Yes. Yeah, and we can't submit it there until we issue the checks and get and show the proof of payment.
Right.
Um, we have given everything to um the Lancaster E D C for the first draw. And last week at the Lancaster County Furs Association meeting, I was um sitting with Ezra and I told him I forgot I needed to check with Jessica and he emailed her when we were sitting there and I have not heard back, so I wanna follow up with the E D C to find, to make sure we have everything we need for that draw. Um, and I'm hoping that funds are not held up due to the state budget issue.
They should have been appropriated.
They should, they were appropriated, but if people weren't working, you know what I mean, like, I don't know. So, all right, um, are there any other questions? Seeing none, I have the motion by councilperson Murphy and the second by councilperson Stahl to approve the change order and payments for um Iron Eagle Excavating, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right. Um, next, could I have a motion to approve contract change order orders number one and two in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents and negative four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and seventeen cents? And the application for payments number three and four in the amounts of one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents and one hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty-one cents to S M Johns and Son Construction for the eight hundred block of Chestnut Street project?
So moved, second.
The motion by councilperson Stahl and a second by councilperson Murphy to approve the change orders and payments to S M Johns and Son Construction for eight hundred block of Chestnut. Any questions, comments?
I would just give kudos to that project there. I live a half block away, so I was seeing it on a regular basis. That was a uh tricky, not an easy intersection and a tricky project to do, given the way that 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 really that condition of the road, plus that intersection was just a freaking mess there. They did a really good job, it's, it's like driving on sheet of glass now.
Yeah, we said this, we knew this was a long time coming, but really, a lot of effort. And I didn't wanna, while we had the topic, trying to final bill was two hundred eighty-nine thousand one hundred thirty dollars and fourteen cents was the total project cost.
And a good bit of that came out of liquid fuels, correct? Yeah. Are there any other questions, comments? There's none, I have a motion by councilperson Stahl, the second by councilperson Murphy approve the change orders and payments for the eight hundred block of Chestnut, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Next, could I have a motion to approve the application for payment number one to H and P Construction, Inc. in the amount of fifty-five thousand twenty-one dollars and nine cents for the Maple Park project?
So moved, second.
A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Geezy um to approve the payment for Maple Park. Questions, comments? Seeing none, motion is by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Geezy to approve the payment for Maple Park, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, uh, new business. Can, we're asked to consider approving the hiring of Jennifer Reed Kirchner as a part-time crossing guard. Oh, I thought we were full, I guess not.
Our struggles continue.
Our struggles continues. Well, we know, I mean, it's it's one of them things.
It is what it is.
Exactly. Are any questions? Does anyone have a problem voting on this tonight? Now, do I have a motion to approve hiring Jennifer Reed Kirchner as part-time crossing guard, beginning at the non-uniform contract rate of seventeen dollars and twenty-six cents per hour, contingent upon successful completion of the background check, medical exam, and drug screening?
Second.
Motion by councilperson for guard, second by councilperson Geezy to approve to hire Jennifer Reed Kirchner for crossing guard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Next, we are asked, the merchants beat me to this, I was gonna put this on for um the next, the next meeting. So they beat me to it, we're asked to consider approving free parking Saturdays from November twenty-ninth to January third. Can you do this every year? Does anyone have a problem voting on this one? No, does anyone wanna make that motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Murphy to approve free parking Saturdays from November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five to January third, twenty twenty-six, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we're asked to consider approval for Merchants Association to host a pirate luncheon and parade using the sidewalk behind the market house to gather, then parade down Sadie Lane and onto the sidewalk in front of the market house and ending inside the market house. This event is March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six from two thirty to seven with the parade taking place between four and five P M. Approval is contingent upon the required, uh, receipt of the required certificate of insurance, receipt of the fifty-dollar application fee, and approval of the market house manager. Any questions?
Geez, there was no issues last time. There was a.
Yeah, there was no issue.
Congratulations, I heard it was packed.
Yeah.
It was, we were not prepared. That's the reason we're doing pirate this time.
All right.
Hoping not to be packed right now.
No.
So welcome. We will, it'll be a good one.
Right, does anyone um have a problem voting on it? Does anyone wanna make that motion?
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to approve the Merchants Association to host a pirate luncheon and parade using the sidewalk behind the market house to gather, then to parade down Sadie Lane and onto the sidewalk in front of the market house and ending inside the market house. The event will be March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six from two thirty to seven with the parade taking place between four and five P M. Approval contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance, receipt of the fifty-dollar application fee and receipt of the required or and approval of the market house manager. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you very much.
Um, next, this was under new business because we hadn't talked about it before, but I was contacted by um Troy Oakham from the uh Watching Clock. They are prepping another LSA application um in to prepare if they are not granted one this round. They still want to apply again. They did change up their scope a little bit and asked um that we would do the same thing as we have been doing for them. So we are asked to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five supporting the LSA grant application for the National Association of Watching Clock Collectors. Are there any questions? Like I said, he did change the the scope a little bit, but it's not, it's nothing like they took out something about the exhibits and, I mean, it's nothing major. Does anyone have a problem voting on that one tonight? No, um, would anyone like to make a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
A motion by councilperson Stahl, second by councilperson Kaufman to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five to support the LSA grant application for the National Association of Watching Clock Collectors, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, next, we're asked to consider approval of the event request for Cumulus Media to host their annual Santa D's Toy Challenge in the jug handle at the entrance the Route four sixty-two bridge from Monday, December eighth through Friday, December twelfth, during which employees of Cumulus Media will camp out and collect toys, which will be donated to Toys for Tots. Approval is contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance. We do this every year too. Anyone have a problem voting? Who wants to make that motion?
Second.
Motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl to approve the event, the special event request for Cumulus Media ninety-six point one S O X Radio to host the annual Santa D's Toy Challenge in the jug handle at the entrance through the Route four sixty-two bridge from Monday, December eighth through Friday, December twelfth, during which time the employees of Cumulus Media will camp out and collect toys, which will be donated to Toys for Tots. Approval is contingent upon receipt of the required certificate of insurance, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and that is the end of our items. Derek, I guess I was able to do it pretty quick, huh? All right, uh, staff reports, comments, and announcements, lister Gable.
I don't have too much to report this evening. I'm sure you all heard, um, a few weeks ago, we were able to get that virus one closed, so that way, once we got to the end, it went pretty smoothly, which was, which was a welcome relief after what we had to go through, so I'm hoping to get onto some other projects now and and get working on some things that I've been backing up. I wish I had an update on the wastewater treatment plant, I don't have anything. We're still waiting for Norfolk Southern to to approve that that easement area. Um, so I will all reach out again, I know that the attorney for uh J G Environmental had reached out just a couple of days ago and I haven't seen anything returned from them, so we'll, we'll keep on and make sure that we try to get that done as quick as possible.
I mean, have they ever said what the issue was?
They have not, uh, they seem to be generally okay with it, we haven't received, it's been a matter of because of the utility pole that is down there kind of in the middle of the driveway, the easement area that's required is is relatively large, it's not just a single driveway out there, you gotta have kind of a double driveway, so we're waiting here on that, it doesn't seem like in principle to have any objection to it, I think it's just takes a long time to get anything from them, so um, hopefully we can get that done quickly, we have done and and J G environmental has done absolutely everything here at this one, so, yeah.
Has any update on the firehouse and as well in the uh auction, auctioning the uh by?
On Ridge Avenue, I'm still waiting on a date, I'm hoping. I'm hoping to have that the next week or so from Klein, Ryder, and Goodwin there. They'd be able to do that. They have all the information, they're just trying to get their schedule together. I did send um that updated agreement of sale to the Columbia E D C. Um, I haven't heard anything back from the employees at this point, so we'll see if I can follow up with them tomorrow for sure. Yeah.
Anything else?
No, I don't have anything to say.
All right, um, engineer Ramallo.
Do you have anything to add?
All right, um, secretary treasure.
Bonnie was approached by V I D A, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, once again this year. Um, it's a United Way program, but they were to uh use the market house building again. And I just wanted to uh see what council's feelings were on that.
I don't have a, but I don't know what. Other, I mean, that's a community service.
Right.
Yeah, they have a, they have a, they don't have any idea of scheduling.
Bonnie, did they have a schedule, uh, V I D A, did they ever get back to you on the amount of time they need, days a week?
Last year, they did every two things, but they couldn't make it through. That would be no longer the possibility for us to do a restaurant there.
Right.
This is the part time Oklahoma City. So um I did contact Bonnie about today and told her that um we've still been through this best plan and that we must try to reach out to small churches to make a week offer one day and somebody else.
Plus, we choose days.
Yeah.
That's all I was asking, you know, who I knew with the market, with the expansion of the market hours with the restaurant there and all. It's going to be broad.
They bring in a lot of computers.
I know, it's a lot of stuff, yeah. And they leave, they store it there, right?
Oh, yeah.
I would ask the library too. For them to meet at the library. They have space there, they have rooms.
I don't know, I think it has to be kind of private because it's like they're doing. I think we need some motors that can probably do some stuff.
It's a light head.
I prefer we didn't.
I'm sorry?
I prefer we didn't use the market house.
We did, you know, you know, use it.
That's a.
I think also like the Brooklyn heads were to activate like, I don't know, become a lot of fobs, getting parking passes. It was kind of involved.
Yeah.
We will try to assist them with finding an alternate location.
Upcoming meetings, none. Um, the, the minutes are in your packet from the L S A workshop in July and the L S A meeting in July and August, PAR September tenth, Parks and Rec September eleventh, Claiming Commission, um, September twenty second, or I'm sorry, July twenty second and September sixteenth. Borough Council comments, councilperson Stahl.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilperson Murphy.
That's a good ad.
Uh, Wilson, where do we stand with the firehouse roof? Done? And how do we do as far as own budget?
It was within budget.
We haven't gotten the bill yet, I don't think it was any over once earlier.
Okay. I'd like to piggyback on the chief's remarks, on Brahmer's remarks, manager Brahmer's remarks. It's very tough getting to say. But uh, the parade was, was a great turnout for Columbia. That was probably one of the larger crowds I've seen in a while. It was just a good night for everybody, so. Thank you to Lions Club, uh, all the clubs have participated in helping. The Sun Stop was a part of that as well. That is all for now.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Councilperson for guard.
I don't have anything, thank you.
I do not have anything either. Announcement at the next meeting at seven P M on Thursday, November sixth. Council will hold a workshop. Looking ahead, the count, the council meeting on the second Tuesday is actually, is also going to be on the Thursday because of Veterans Day. So it'll be November thirteenth. Just throwing that out.
And so, what, the tenth, do we want that?
What?
It's going to be on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because the Tuesday is the eleventh.
Okay. Thirteenth, the thirteenth, meetings move to thirteenth.
Right, that's what I was just saying.
Do we have an agenda for a workshop?
Uh, yes, the workshop, we are going to have Rick Brennaman come and talk to us, and then we are, the rest of it is going to be finished reviewing budget and the budget discussions.
Wonderful.
So we're not going from Tuesday to Thursday, we're going from Tuesday to Tuesday?
Thursday to Thursday.
Thursday to Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, next Thursday and then the following Tuesday. And remember, next Tuesday is Election Day. There are no changes to polling locations in Columbia. So wherever you voted in the primary is where you vote um next week.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Jake and the crew for a wonderful job on Chestnut Street, the eight hundred block. Man, I've lived there for twenty some years. Parking on a humpy road. It is absolutely gorgeous. I park out front now, first time in years. Thank you, Jake. Wonderful work.
And Derek, because he designed.
And Derek, Derek, yes, Derek. Yeah, great work, what a pleasure. Yeah, thank you for, for increasing our property values on the eight hundred block. Wonderful work.
All right, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Geezy to adjourn at eight thirty eight P M, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right, we are adjourned, we have chess signed.
Check's decided, girl.